Cal State Dominguez mom, awesome. Zoom user, who are you? Cal State Dominguez mom, awesome. Oh, you know what I forgot to do? Mute. There we go. Have to mute YouTube or else we get terrible feedback. Alright, who's the Zoom user? Is that you, George?
It's Ms. Hawkins, how are you?
Hey, Ms. Hawkins, how you doing?
I'm well, and you?
I'm well, too. It's so nice to hear from you.
Likewise.
It's been a little while.
It has.
Hey, homecoming is October 10th. It's really early this year.
Are you serious?
I am very serious. We're playing Verba Day. That's just next week. Good lord.
Man, I wonder if I can, so the, so that's on a Friday, right?
Yeah, it is. It's October the 10th. The game starts at 7:30.
I wonder if I can get a game on that Thursday so I can attend, um, or else I'll be on the football field somewhere else.
Oh.
I'm going to ask and see if I can, um, if I can get a Thursday game and see what happens.
That would be very awesome. Let me start texting everybody, make sure they got the message. This shouldn't be a very long meeting. We're gonna go over some, uh, community school budget info. And then, uh, that's it. And then we have our regular meeting on October 7th, which is, what, next Tuesday?
I have another meeting I have to go to today in person, so.
Okay, well hopefully we'll be done before you have to do that.
Um, if it's not, I'll have to text, um. Yeah, I'll have to text because it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be kind of loud, I'm assuming, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I won't be able to, probably won't be able to talk or anything.
Okay, no problem. So what I'm gonna do is put link to, hello? I'm gonna put the link to the, uh, the sign in.
Okay.
Hopefully you can get in. I know there's always been some issue with, with you being able to get in. I tried to make sure it says, like, anybody can edit.
Ms. Moore, you're gonna have to show me how to, um, record on Zoom now. I thought I could do it, but then for the senior meeting, I wasn't able to record, so. And I, and then I went back and looked at my settings and I couldn't seem to adjust it either, so. Um, you'll have to show me how to do it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you host for a minute, cause maybe you have to be host.
No, I, I just meant in my, in, when I did one for the seniors.
Okay, did you click livestream?
No, I didn't. I didn't see that as an option.
Okay, and you were the host, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well you click on, uh, uh, more, and you clicked on more?
Yeah, I clicked everything, but, you know, well, we'll have to, we'll have to play with it sometime and.
Okay, we'll, we'll sit together when I have a conference spirit. Okay. Yeah. It's Sophia, one, two, three, four, five. George is in the car, he said he's on his way. And let me text, uh, I see, meeting started. So how's everyone doing now that we're, you know, and we're, we're, we're really like, I think this is the time when you really feel like you really got your schedule going. And, uh, it feels like now we're on our second report card, for god's sakes. Mises window opens tomorrow. I'm gonna send him the link, OSLC 2021. When I saw Ms. McIntyre today, I forgot to remind her. First game of the Dodgers playoffs. No, thank you. Oh, let me mute for a sec. Okay, well while we're waiting for folks to come in the room, uh, let's put the, uh, let's see. I'll copy the, the sign in in there. Sophia, are you able to get into the minutes? I made a copy to get started for you.
Do you not see me in there?
I'm not even in that. No, I know it's behind here.
I'm like literally typing in it.
Awesome. So it probably says I'm in it, but I, I can't see it, it's covered up.
Okay.
Beautiful. Alright. Hello, how are you?
What's up, what's up, Ms. Moore?
Life in the big city, sir. Alright, and then, uh. Alright, here they all come. Hello, 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 how are you? Submit the other person, who do we? Alright, we need two more to be official, so why don't I go ahead and at least? And if somebody can share in the chat, um, the sign in again, because we just had Mr. Vias come in. Mariana. Alright. Alright, I am going to, while we wait for two more people, because we're still waiting for, uh, the principal and then one other person to come in. Alright. I'm just sending somebody a text right now. Dodgers and Cincinnati Reds, game one is at six o'clock. Alright, where was I?
This is a lo, this is a long meeting?
Oh, it's gonna be a short meeting. We just had one thing on the agenda, uh, besides, you know, taking roll call. So I'll go ahead and start with the land acknowledgement. Unless somebody else wants to read this? Alright, I'll read it. "This land on which I inhabit is physically situated in the original ancestral homelands of the Tongva people. We pay respect to the Tongva and all indigenous people, past, present, and future, and their continuing presence in the homeland and throughout their historical diaspora. The struggle for liberation, justice, and reparations is how we truly show honor. For the life and labor acknowledgement, we pay homage to those who were stolen from Africa, placed in bondage, falsely named as chattel, and forced into labor, who were called slaves but never submitted to such, and have always been fully human, with an unbroken connection to the divine and to each other. We honor our African ancestors for the still unpaid labor which built that what is now the Americas. To both our indigenous and African forebears, we commit to the continued struggle for liberation and reparations, for it is through this and through freedom and justice that we truly give honor." And usually for that we say, "Ache." And for today's meeting, let's see, where did I put the agenda? It's over here, it's over here. And I think I'll go to the minutes. Hmm, there we go, minutes. And that's kind of tiny. Alright, so we're just waiting for one more person. Let me see where Mr. Malta is. Is that him? Let's take that down. Okay, I am not seeing what I'm supposed to see, folks. Go away, go away. Okay, there we go. Nope, that's not it either. Go away. Have that, that. Have that little beach ball spinning around right now. Alright. Okay. Uh, we're gonna call the meeting to order now at 5:41 PM. And Mix Dow, if you could do us the honor of taking role, that'd be greatly appreciated. If you're unable to do so, let me know, we can have someone else do that, or I can.
Oops, I was already unmuted. Mr. Malta.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Anderson, absent. Ms. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Diaz.
Present.
Mr. Outlaw. Absent. Dr. Castillo.
Present.
I'm Mix Dow, I'm present. Uh, Ms. Dodd. Absent. Uh, Ms. Jackson. Absent. Ms. McIntyre. Absent. Ms. Navias.
Present.
Mr. Nguyen. Absent. Teacher Ren.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Campbell. Absent. Ms. Martinez. Absent. Ms. Armienta.
Present.
Ms. Agassim. Absent. Ms. Hawkins.
Present.
Okay, and then we don't have any student members at the moment. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine voting members present, um, including teacher Ren. So we do have quorum.
Awesome. Alright, do we want to go ahead and approve the minutes from the previous meeting on August the 19th? Is anybody, uh, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes? Uh, I could put the language up there for you. Hold on just a second.
Is that at this meeting or the next meeting?
Um, we can go ahead and prove it at this meeting. We have quorum.
Okay.
Uh, where's the little language that says that? There we go.
Hi, Paola Armienta, move to approve the minutes with any corrections, deletions, deletion, uh, deletions or additions.
Excellent.
I second. I sent to Castillo second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that the minutes be approved with any corrections or deletions, additions. Are we ready for discussion? Any hands raised? After no further discussion, the question is on the adoption of the motion that the minutes be approved with any corrections, deletions, or additions. Those in favor of the motion, please type "I" in the chat, uh, minutes "I" or minutes "no" or minutes "abstain."
Okay, we have nine "I's", zero "no's", zero "abstains". Nobody didn't vote. Motion passes.
Okay, and put the minutes back up. Close on the right screen. Alright, uh, do we have any public comments right now before we go into our new business? Parents or staff? We have no students present, present? Alright, on to community schools update. Dr. Castillo, take it away.
Hi, um, so the, it's kind of both community schools plus budget items. There's two things, two budgets that need to be discussed. Although there is now a new chink, uh, in one of them, so. In 11266, initially we were only allocated $8,019. Uh, and then when we started the year, there was about, uh, what was it? It was like 75,807 in pending distribution, which didn't really make sense to me because as I, as far as I knew, we had used it all, um. But we were still told to reallocate it, which is why I'm here. Uh, but then today, we got told that that 75,000 is getting, got moved to a new fund, a new budget. And I didn't bring the number with me, Ms. Moore, I don't know if you have it, um. And they're waiting to evaluate and see if there's anything that's missing that still needs to be charged. Uh, and then they'll like, release it again and whatnot, so. As far as we can tell, I've asked all contracts, I've asked all the vendors, I've asked everyone, everything that we've done, everything's been paid for. So we anticipate that we should get it back, um. So what we want to do right now, regardless of what like budget number it is, um, and if we have a different amount, slightly, say we have slightly less than the 75,000, we still want to try to adjust it into the categories that I'm gonna propose, um. And so we could just sort of approve the budget lines with allowing room for the number to change based off of what we get, if that's alright with everybody. If, if that doesn't make sense, please let me know. And I'm gonna take over the screen for just a second to show you guys. So last year, we had a, agreed to put the 8,000 in contracts, and that was gonna be used to get more signage on the Hoover side of the school. Uh, we're still gonna do that. It is gonna be a little bit more than the 8,000, so this would help us out because there's a lot of vines and stuff that have to be taken out, so, uh, it comes out to just over 12,000, um. So with that 75,000, we wanted to add more to contracts, bump that up to about 40,000 to leave room for, you know, whatever sort of programming and opportunities that we want, um, working with the Student Advisory Council. I'm hoping to help have them elect a, a school improvement project. And based off of what they say, then potentially this money could be used to help fulfill whatever school improvement project the students want. The other suggestions that came out that, that fall under the safety priority that came out of our asset and needs assessment was to add Dean X time, so our dean stays after school longer to support with supervision, um, in campus safety. And last year, he used about $20,000 worth of X time, so it was asked if we can include that in our budget, which is possible. And then we have the goal of getting more teachers trained in like restorative justice or equity, um, equity grading. And rather than paying X time, which would mean teachers coming in on Saturdays or after school, which hasn't been happening as much, we are hoping to instead use it for substitute teachers to do pullouts where a sub can, can, um, be in there while the teachers are still on campus and, and getting the training then. Mr. Mr. Kawhi, our EGI champion, drafted a proposal of what that might look like, so in this case, this is for about seven teachers to get trained over the six weeks, three in the fall and three in the spring. So this would help pay for the subs for their class. So that's for this extra funds that were for 11266. And again, it might be called a different fund now, and it might end up being a little bit less, it might end up being a little bit more, we're not sure yet. But either way, we're hoping that we can get approval today from LSLC to allocate money in, into those budget lines.
Alright, can, uh, someone make a motion to approve the proposed budget and then we can have discussion? It would be similar to, I'm gonna put the language up here from the minutes and just change that from minutes to community school recommend, recommended budget. Somebody?
Hi, Paola Armienta. Oh, lord, help me out.
Move to approve?
Move to approve.
The recommended community school budget?
The recommended community school budget.
Um, once we finally know the actual budget.
Once we know our final budget.
Need someone to second?
I second. I sent to Castillo second the motion.
Ooh, but it's your motion, I don't know if you can second.
Okay.
Hi, Mariana Navias, second the motion.
Okay, very good. Alright, so it's been moved in second that the recommended community school budget be approved, as soon as we are, uh, final on what the exact budget is. Alright, so, um, are you ready for discussion? Yes, questions?
Can you give me some examples of what the dean would do after school? I know we have, um, our after-school program, but what else would he be doing?
Yeah, so similarly, just sort of making sure that students are where they're supposed to be on campus, you know, um. Learning is like a concern, so helping make sure that kids are where they're at. Um, I don't know if they might start offering the opportunity for students to complete intervention hours after school, potentially that could be an option. I doubt it though, because for the most part, I think he's walking around, trying to make sure people are where they're supposed to be. And, um, you know, if a situation happens after school, then he's the one handling it in terms of calling parents, calling, you know, anyone who might need to be called based on the situation. I don't know if Mr. Malta has more details on that.
Yeah, so, so basically, uh, the dean is also a certificated teacher position, so his hours end, you know, after, after six hours, so in order for us to have him supervise after school and take care of business such as meeting with, uh, parents, um, you know, after school, then then he literally does stay an hour extra, uh, to take care of business. Um, so that's part of the reason that we would, we would extend and pay him extra because his, his, um, contractual hours and just like, um, most, most teachers on campus.
I have a question. So the extended hours for the dean, and I have been on campus after hours, and it does look like sometimes that educator might need a little extra help, but how many hours are we talking about the dean staying after school? Is it just an hour or is it like as needed? One hour a day?
I think it's pretty much been one hour a day.
Okay.
Yeah, and that kind of also applies to his, um, supervision during the morning before school starts.
Okay, so it would be like an extra hour in the morning and an extra hour in the afternoon?
No, it's just one hour every day.
Oh, okay.
He has only requested for that one extra.
Okay. And that would just be after school then, not in the morning, you're saying?
Yeah, that is correct, but sometimes, like I said, he does, um, some duties before school.
Okay.
But he, but he doesn't claim anything other than what we pay him.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? With no further discussion, we're ready for the vote. CS budget, "I", CS budget, "no", type into the, uh, CS budget, I, CS budget, no, type into the, uh, chat there.
I have a delayed question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Stop. Go ahead.
Um, does the dean get a stipend?
So that was discussed, um, as well. Uh, you can either get one or the other. So you cannot get both. So he's not getting a stipend.
Can you elaborate what that means for a parent perspective?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So a stipend means that we give you, uh, a bulk, uh, each semester of what could be potentially be, um, all the extra work that you do in a certain job, such as all the coordinators, uh, get a, a stipend on top, um, of their salary, um, every semester. Um, but if you break it down, uh, most of the time that stipend does not equal to the number of hours that they put in, in, into that semester. Um, but we can only offer one or the other. So a lot of, a lot of the times, a coordinator um, will make a decision and sometimes they, they cannot make a decision. Yeah, the decision is already made for them by the district, but, um, if the this, if some some coordinators, for example, do have the option of either getting the X time, um, which means that they can they, they, anytime that they spend after school doing some special project, then they will request those, those hours. Um, or if you request to get paid a stipend, it's a set amount. Um, and you cannot claim any e- extra time, um, during that semester. That kinda how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Either way, you can only get one, not both.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, CS budget, I or nay in the, uh, chat?
Adriana, that was just to me.
Ms. Hawkins, I know you were headed for something. Do you need one of us to vote for you or are you able to type in the chat?
I'm not able to, um, type in the chat, but I'll abstain.
Okay.
So we have eight ayes, uh, zero nos, one abstain, nobody didn't vote, um, motion passes.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Okay, so then the second one, um, is the community school collaboration grant, um, that we've gotten for the last few two years or so. And this is supposed to be the last year, but, um, the community schools initiative is applying for an extension. We won't know if we get it. And initially, we were just given like a set amount and it was like a hundred thousand for teacher X time and all the teachers had to submit a plan of the days they're gonna use it, how they're gonna use it. And I had to submit that and get approved. Um, forty thousand for contracts. I had to go for student leadership. Fourteen thousand for parent engagement. Fifteen hundred dollars for a stipend for EGI champion, things like that, right? It was very like delineated. So we didn't bring it up in LSLC because there wasn't anything that we could decide. Well, now, there's, and we were told it wasn't gonna roll over and the district central was holding it all because they were, had their own cost for managing the grant. Um, but now they have decided to release those funds to the school and saying that we do, we are getting rollover and we're getting sort of like a rollover lump sum that we now have to decide how much to allocate in those same sort of categories that we're, we're told to do before because those are the grant categories. So we can't spend it on something like, um, D next time for safety because that's not part of the grant. So let me, see, I could try to give you a, an example of the categories. Uh, and so for us, as of right now, that, uh, see, I'll share this with you. So you could see what, what we initially got for this year. So this is like what we were told we were gonna be able to get this year, right? These are the sort of positions that we could fund and pay for. This work-based learning coordinator, that is like a central position. So a lot of schools are sharing it through the Link Learning Office and then that coordinator comes and, and supports multiple schools. So she's not actually at Hawkins. But these are, this is an example of, of what's allocated. And our, our budget looks weird. It doesn't even actually reflect these amounts, but again, these are basically the categories that we're allowed to use the money for. In terms of rollover, we were allocated four hundred and twenty seven thousand and fifty dollars, right? Which is a lot of money. Um, and so there's a lot of discussion about how that money should be used. Bearing in mind that it is money that's gonna go away, but it is, um, it is hopefully gonna at least roll over for, for one more year. So in talking today with Mr. Malta and Ms. Moore, we wanted to propose some ideas again, and knowing that our budgets are getting tight and for example, our budget is even tighter this year because we didn't meet norm and we, we're having to use extra funds to pay to keep a teacher. What we're suggesting is that we set aside about three hundred thousand dollars to be used to pay for a half of a PSA and half of a PSW like we have now, because then the district helps with the other half. Um, so assuming that, you know, they, based off of whatever they might make, we're hoping that about three hundred thousand dollars would, would at least help us fund approximately two positions for next year. Um, that leaves us about a hundred and twenty seven thousand to still use for this year. I wanna put about forty four thousand of that in, or actually more like forty seven thousand, no, no, fifty seven thousand, sorry, fifty seven thousand in contracts. One, again, thinking about school improvement and the, one specifically for the garden through CC and J, C, not CC, SJLI, which would help us revamp the garden. Um, bring someone to help us maintain it, plus, uh, provide education for students and parents and, um, stewardship opportunities. So, um, basically helping give back to anyone who would then come and manage. So that hopefully we're building the system where eventually someone can take over so that if we no longer have the grant, we still have a good set of people who know how to manage the garden. Right now, the plan was to spend about twenty four thousand for Pique, the Parent Institute for Quality Education. Um, and then twenty thousand out of Title One, but instead of waiting for twenty thousand for twen- Title One, use the rest in, from this fund as well again. So paying the full forty four thousand for Pique. And that would allow us to have a total of, I think, five different types of classes for parents that would run throughout the course of the year. Um, ranging from primarily, we wanna focus on building stu- parent leadership capacity so that we have, um, strong parent leaders. And then as well as social emotional learning, STEAM, financial literacy. And there was one more, oh, the bridge to college, doing that one again. So having those five courses would, um, be the goal. Um, we wanted to add more to conferences. As of now, there was only about four thousand in conferences. Last year, that wasn't even enough to cover for myself to attend the normal community school conferences. So we wanna try to bump that up. So at least maybe the community school um, community rep, Ms. Martinez could attend and then maybe some additional ones if possible. I see Ms. Hawkins, I, I'll, I'll get to you right now. And then more teacher X time for, again, like we talked about, um, either EGI training or restorative justice training. And hopefully doing a contract with CCEJ for restorative justice training, which would be about, about thirteen thousand dollars of a contract. And then using about forty five thousand dollars for teacher X time or subs based off of whatever we decide and need. And then, um, fifteen thousand dollars for Homies Unidos so that we can do, last year, we only, we did one boys that ran fall and spring. And then one girls that was just in the spring. This year, we're doing both fall and both spring. And having them, um, be more involved with creating a Central American Youth Leadership Conference. So the capacity for that would, would grow as well through, through this. So that's already about, I don't know, what, what did we say it was, Ms. Moore?
A hundred sixty thousand? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think, yeah. So that's about seventy one thousand eight hundred and seventy five of what I just suggested. That even still leaves another fifty five thousand for us to sort of eventually decide other categories or to let it roll over. Um, so those are some of the suggestions now for how much to save for next year. So I guess the main thing that we're thinking about trying to prove is to save about three hundred thousand for next year for positions. And to use a hundred and twenty seven thousand now to have the option to use about a hundred and twenty seven thousand now. If we don't use all of it, that's fine. It would roll over. In some of the ways that I talked about, which would be more in contracts, more in conferences and more in teacher X time.
So we need somebody to make a motion, um, recommending this, uh, I'm sorry, to, to approve this and then we can have discussion. And I'll put that language back up there really quickly. I think I can replace current share with this one. Alright, does someone wanna make a motion to approve and then we can have discussion? And this is for the collaborative, the community schools collaborative grant, or it's not community schools, what's the grant called again?
Yes, it's Community Schools Collaboration.
Okay, alright. Somebody wanna step out there?
I'm putting some language in the chat in case that helps.
Okay.
I'm gonna give this a try. Hi, Paul Armienta, make a motion to approve community schools partnership program.
Sonia McIntyre, second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, um, to approve.
Sorry, who, who's second? She said it. Thank you.
Sorry. So it's been moved in second that the, uh, budget for a community, for California Community School Partnership Program be approved. Are we ready for discussion? And I think, uh, Ms. Hawkins has her hand up right now to go first. Oops, sorry, missed it.
Should I speak?
And I'm, I'll go back and, uh, unshare. So we, um, Dr. Castillo, please. Yeah, I'm just gonna go back and, and unshare so Dr. Castillo can put the, um, community school collaborative budget back up there. Yeah, go ahead, Ms., Ms. Hawkins.
Hi, um, I was just wondering, um, I heard the suggestions, but I'm wondering what are some of the options? Um, also that might have been left off that we could hear. And also, how do you pronounce that for, um, you said parent leadership, P I Q E?
It's a Parent Institute for Quality Education.
Right, it's been used at, um, at Hawkins before?
Yes, it has. Yeah, we've used it a long time ago in the past and then we used it again last year.
Did we draw any, um, data from how effective, um, P I Q E was?
Yeah, I think it's one of our, the highest attended, um, parent workshops that we've had. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Malta, if you wanna speak to the numbers, but I know at least for, for the evening ones that were in person too, it was in the thirties, right? In terms of parents that were attending.
That is, that is correct. Um, we did not have, uh, all of them finish the program because they were absent. But it definitely was the highest number of parents that have, have shown to Hawkins for any particular workshop. It, it was a full house during the evening.
Yeah, yeah, we got good feedback. Last year, we just did the Bridge to College, the Social Emotional Learning and the STEAM one, because it's related to one of our pathways. And so the justification also for financial literacy is that that's also connected to one of our pathways, which is why we wanna add it. And then, again, just sort of thinking about capacity building for the school is why we wanted to add the stu- the parent leadership one or, um, so that we can again, build our, our parent leader base so that they can, uh, leave more things on our campus. So that was the rationale for the programs we chose through, through them.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to further answer your question in terms of options, what, what's on the screen are, are the only options for us? These are like the only categories that we can put money into. And something like a coordinator differential, that one doesn't apply. That it's just that we have the one PBL champion and, and that's it. So that one doesn't really count. Admin X time is also very tricky. Um, so it's hard to kinda put more in that one. Uh, and then the classi- classified overtime one, that could potentially if, if we have a need for it. Um, so really it comes down to conferences, teacher X time, which could also be substitute time and conferences, which is why I, I, I said if we could put more money into those three categories.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Um, I, I can't really, um, read the screen right now, but I was wondering if any of the funding was able to go to, um, to support scholars with academics and maybe some of the subjects that, um, might have been, um, I guess need to be strengthened a little more, like maybe math or English. Was there any, um, opportunities to get a contract with someone that could, uh, support subjects that were, um, that need a little strengthening perhaps or no?
Um, not necessarily because it's, it's again, they're supposed to be connected to, um, enrichment and leadership training, PBL and parent engagement. Mister Chavez, Mister Chavez is already sort of working on another grant with the Link Learning Office that would get us more towards work-based learning, PBL, linked learning. Um, so we're thinking of probably not doing anything within that area. Um, and then Ms. Jackson and I met with an organization today to try to get more tutors to be in the classes with, um, an organization called Living Advantage. So to speak to your point, similarly, we were hoping to try to get partnership that could be in the classroom to support students in, in the content area. So hopefully that'll be a way that we can get that because it doesn't necessarily fall under the, the, the grant categories.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Hi. So I was wondering, uh, about PK in, in general, not wondering because I've been to several meetings and it is usually well-attended. Does PK, uh, here's the part I'm wondering, does PK still give certificates to parents that gives them some sort of credit if their student decides to go to, um, a, a Cal State or a CSU? Is that still part of the program? Do you know?
Not that I know of. I know they have, they give like a certificate and they have like a graduation ceremony, but I don't know if there's any uh, any connection to universities.
Okay, there was some part of it and this was a couple of years ago. So it may not be part of the program or maybe it's different part of what we get out of PK, but I remember them. I remember them giving some kinda certificate for training parents on how to get into college and and then they gave that kinda certificate, and then um the other thing is, um the content area that Ms. Hawkins was talking about, that also sounds like something that might be available through Title One, maybe? Is that also the kind of funding that Title One covers, like content area, explicit content area support?
I I mean, I can't necessarily speak to that, I'm not exactly sure, uh but part of the goal with doing this too is to rel- leave some funds for Title One, so that more things could happen through Title One. And um Teacher Ren also shared in the chat that Teacher X Time does allow for teachers to attend PD to become more effective in their practice, so you know, that does end up affecting um how instruction happens and hopefully supporting the students.
Yeah, currently Title One is paying for study smart tutors during the day. Uh they're the ones that are going into the classrooms and the content areas to support students. Um and so I don't know if it's worth mentioning, and also Dr. Castillo, that PK did offer uh the other program for educators and also did offer.
Oh, that's right. For PK, yeah, they're gifting us that, right, yeah.
Yeah, and they're gifting that, uh um you know, as a thank you for for contracting them, so that's a a another uh extra program from PK um for educators, for our teachers. That um teachers will have an opportunity to participate in this other program as well. And I do believe that they also threw in their um a couple of cap and gowns or something like that for for the parents um that that needed to buy a cap and gown for for their kids if they participated in PK.
Yeah, now that you mentioned that study smart, um I think Ms. Jackson had mentioned that we our contract was gonna end with them, so maybe this might help us extend the contract, maybe that's a something that school site council can discuss and decide. Ms. Armenta, I believe you had your hand up, did you still have a question?
Negative, thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Alright, seeing no other discussion, we're ready for the vote. So this is for the Community School Collaboration Grant.
Yeah, maybe just put grant budget or something?
CS grant?
CS grant, okay.
I, nay, abstain.
MacIntyre, I'm driving, I for the grant.
See, you're about to type uh, are you about to type down, is that what you're getting ready to do?
I did it.
Okay.
We have nine ayes, zero noes, zero abstains, motion passes.
Alright. Alright, so that is the end of our agenda. Uh um as far as like new business, um next thing on the agenda is announcements, anybody have any announcements? I'd like to announce that on Friday, October the tenth, is the homecoming football game, please invite alumni to attend. It's at seven thirty PM, and Hawkins High School will be playing Bourbon Day. Oh, and parents, if your student needs to take a makeup school ID picture, that is happening for what looks like a forty-five minute window on Friday, this Friday, October third from twelve fifteen to one PM only, is that correct? Um Dr. Castillo, that's what I saw on the calendar.
Yeah, students are gonna be summoned.
Okay.
And it's longer than that, cuz it's CCR, but you know, they want it to be quick, they the photoroma does not wanna be here longer than an, be there longer than an hour.
Okay.
Friday, October third, down.
For this Friday?
This Friday, yes.
Yeah, this Friday.
Yeah, and so with that part of reason why it's important is that soon, starting October sixth, the cafeteria is gonna be requiring students to scan their ID or punch in their ID number in order to get lunch. Should be interesting.
It is, I I think more kids need to know that. Have some that didn't wanna take their picture because they didn't think their hair was gonna look good.
Yeah, so the the student council rep should have shared that out, that was shared with them as well.
And they should have received a letter home as well with the with a barcode that they can use in case they don't have their uh school ID.
Okay. So we shouldn't be hungry kids.
I've al- I've also shared with students just verbally.
How important it is to have that idea that they're gonna need it to get their food?
That they're gonna need it for lunch.
I'm assuming that also means breakfast?
Probably.
For meals, huh? Mr. Maltz, when's the next Coffee with the Principal, is that scheduled?
Yes.
October sixteenth.
October sixteenth, yeah, usually is the third Thursday of the month.
You know what time it's gonna be?
Ten AM.
Ms. Armenta?
Why aren't we having Coffee with the Principal hybrid anymore?
Yeah, that's a good question, I'm not sure, I'm gonna go back to the parent center and ask. Uh I I think this last time, there was something else going on, I'm not sure what happened, but I'll I'll I was wondering that as well.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready to move on, close out?
Yep, any other announcements? Alright, anything any uh particular we need to have on the agenda? Our next meeting is gonna be October seventh, and we will uh induct our new parents uh and or community members. We have some parents that said they're interested, so I'll be reaching out to them, um anything else?
Oh, I think that's it.
Alright, so the time now is six twenty-five PM, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye-bye.